And welcome to the Wednesday, October 15th, 2025 work session meeting of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will our clerk please call the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Leanhouts?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Teklish?
Here.
Okay, first item is approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to take a peek.
I'll make a motion to approve last month's meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
Okay, I don't think we have any guests. We'll get right in to the action items. We'll start with the Penfield Town Fee Schedule.
Yes, I have two apologies. So the, this is the annual time of year where the fee schedule is updated. No significant changes. The only ones I would point out is there is a modest increase in some of the lodge and pavilion rentals that coincides with, I believe, the town board's discussions during budget preparation. There is also addition of a grade and fill fee amount. Before it used to just say C Engineering Department, so we've specified the per lot fee. We also had to add in an EPod fee as well to correspond with the EPod regulations, so it was clear as what that charge would be. And it's a fee based on acreage of disturbance. And then additionally, the building department did make a couple of minor tweaks to fees associated with electrical permitting and some other minor ones, and those fees were actually adjusted downward because it was intended to correspond with the inspections that the town does or does not do. And in those instances, the building department, the director, Alan Wrights, believed that they might have been priced just a little bit too high for the type and scope of work that was being performed with those permits. So the fee schedule, and I apologize, I can bring it up here in just a moment. Bear with me for a second. I'm so sorry. I will bring it over. And this, they're just, oh, don't mind. I might not have the right one. Yeah, so you'll see a slight adjustment here. There was a little bit of a miscalculation error on the Webster sewer connection for non-residential construction, so that was corrected. And so everything was very minor. Happy to make sure that that's in your folder. I'm not sure if the PDF made it over to...
No, the PDF didn't. Carrie, do you know?
Yeah, it's checked, it's in the wrong folder.
Oh, goodness.
That's all.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
I knew I dragged and dropped it. I'm like, where is it? I'm having a slight panic moment while we're sitting here.
It's in with the...
It's okay, there's only three. Oh, I see, I see. I say it's in the facilities.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel better because I thought I dragged and dropped it and I just didn't know where it went.
Carrie, did Sarah leave any notes for you regarding the changes to the recreation and summer camp schedules?
Yeah, so I believe that the fees reflected, she indicated that, I think she had made the updates to the fee schedule. If they don't look correct and I've got the wrong version, we can make sure the correct version is circulated to the town board. Bear with me, I'll pull up that PDF.
So I think, Kevin, during budget sessions, you and I felt a little bit more strongly about those changes, and we did as a compromise, and some of the rationale that Jeff brought with other residents that had expressed concerns to our recreation department. I don't know if you want to highlight a couple of those?
I don't know.
Okay. So the only thing I wanted to highlight for residents who may see, again, the modest increase as well as a cancellation fee that was instituted. So we try to keep summer camp programming and general programming for families at a very competitive and less-than-market rate. Our summer camps are highly sought after. They're long wait lists. And again, for families of single income or other income, we want to keep it very affordable for our Penfield children. Some of the emails, communications that we got resident feedback was that some families could have the option for booking all 16 weeks in advance if they were able to, and families who live paycheck to paycheck were ending up being waitlisted. And so to try to, and it's all like a first come, first served basis, and we would see a lot of the cancellations coming in very late or frequently. And so what we did was added a very modest, I think it's a, is it a $10 cancellation fee or was it 20? Can you just confirm for me, Carrie?
Yeah.
We did that last year.
Yeah, with this.
It increased modestly this year, right?
The cancellation fee?
The cancellation fee increased modestly as well, as well as the overall fee went up.
The summer, yeah, unfortunately.
Summer went up.
That was the one that was...
It's $25, I think.
I don't see, I don't see that.
The cancellation fee, I don't see it listed specifically, so we can add that in.
Are the summer camp fees even in here? Because that's more of a, it's not a...
Bear with me. That, these, they might be in the record, the one before. Bear with me for a moment.
That's all I wanted to highlight. It was a very modest increase, and it's to try to make it more equitable at sign up and to discourage just booking everything or booking at more than one place, Penfield, the Y, et cetera, et cetera, and trying to make it as equitable. And again, we didn't do it very flippantly. It was discussed wanting to balance the interests. And again, there is a slight increase, but wanted to, again, keep it less-than-market rate.
Okay. I think for the purposes of the fee schedule that we're looking at here, this is only outlining, it doesn't include the programming fees because those are subject to vary from season to year.
They vary from season to season.
So this is the set amount for the usage of our facilities and the rental for like the fields and such that either private or organizations pay to the town. So sorry for the not clarifying.
Okay, sorry. I read the notes for recreation reservation fees, but that's limited to rentals of like the courts.
The physical, yeah.
Lodges, okay. All right, then, if there are no other concerns with the facility rental fees and at least with the permitting, and again, I think you did mention, Carrie, that some of the fees are lowered.
Yep.
Where inspections are not required, and then the rest being corrections. There are no other concerns, I'd make a motion for a resolution to be prepared for the adoption of the 2026 fee schedule.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Lee, I'm sorry, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Mark with sidewalk waiver request. Please.
So this came before the planning board. It is a two-lot subdivision, so Carrie's highlighting 1395 in the middle. There's an existing house on the southern half, kind of hidden in the trees there. They're splitting the lot, bisecting it, and then creating one new lot to the north. So according to our sidewalk policy, new lot would need to install sidewalks just on that small portion. The existing home was not as the parent parcel. So we had looked at Shoe Craft Road for sidewalks a couple of years ago, started down that process, and then the neighbors came back in and said, really, we don't want them. So PRC reviewed it. It's supportive of it. Noticing on my formula, I did make a math error on my formula. So as you look, our policy says basically it's the length of frontage 104.5 feet times the county bid price $78, which gives you $8,151 is the cost to install the sidewalks. Our price is it's a 50% cost is what the waiver fee is. So if you look in there, $4,075.50 would be the waiver amount. Somehow my formula is showing that's the maximum amount we charge per lot is $5,000. But if the waiver was granted, they would owe the $4,075.50 would be paid into the... Thank you, Carrie.
We're going to get the other one out of the view.
I'm just holding my sheet here going through, going, wait, that's not quite right. So we would take the sidewalk easement no matter what. That's always a requirement. We take the easement if and when it ever was decided to go back to Shoe Craft Road. But this would be the only piece of sidewalk in that lower stretch on Shoe Craft if it was required to be installed.
Yeah, and bring up the map again, would you please?
Sure.
And just a reminder, this is something we pursued, you know, previously with sidewalks and just didn't get enough buy-in from neighbors. Is that correct, Mark?
There's nothing.
This is south of Plank, west side of the road. We will be putting sidewalks along Plank, so it is approximate to that, but we don't have any sidewalks in this stretch of Shoe Craft. And as the supervisor shared, something we did pursue, we had a petition, we did, you know, begin that process of designing the sidewalks and going after that. And then once the neighbors kind of saw the impact of sidewalks on trees, vegetation, you know, whatnot, you know, some of them had second thoughts. So, you know, they asked us to no longer consider sidewalks in this area. And so this is, you know, falling in that section.
So in this instance, just a roll call vote is all you need.
Roll call vote to send a letter basically authorizing the sidewalk waiver if the board is supportive of that.
I'm good with that. Okay. Vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, board. I'll follow up with the letter.
Thanks, Mark. All right, Carrie, back to you. Request for permission to install a shed at 1618 Jackson Road. This is part of the Penfield Food Shelf.
Yeah, so this came as a request from an organization that wanted to offer donated pet food and wanted to work with the food shelf. I think there's still ongoing conversations happening as to whether or not that this is the right location, and so they're still continuing that conversation. I wanted just to bring it to the board's attention because if they wanted to move in that direction, they would need town board authorization. It is town-owned property. The stipulation would be that the organization would make application to the building department for a building permit. They would provide the insurances. The shed would be conforming with any and all zoning requirements as far as setbacks. I don't know if this project's going to move forward, so this may be a moot point, but since it's on the agenda, we can find out if there's any issues or concerns. The idea was to have a shed where the pet food could be stored and then donated to families in need. And so if there's any issues or concerns with that, we could, you know, bring that to their attention. If not, at this point, it's something that is still being discussed with the, among the ecumenical food shelf board and others. Any issues or concerns?
And to clarify, you're asking the board to weigh in because the property is owned by the town for where they're constructing?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And officially, they would need our, like, we couldn't issue a permit unless the property owner says it's okay. So, because they'd be a tenant building a shed. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't know if the project's going to go forward at this time, but if you guys wanted to share your approval of that, we could document that in the minutes so that if they do decide to come forward, we know that this has already been addressed. God bless you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if any, if there's no issues or concerns, again, it could just be a roll call vote saying it's okay if they want to move forward.
One thing I would like to say is that this is a really valuable service. We do this with the Meals on Wheels where I work, and the seniors just absolutely love it because very often their pets are in need as well.
Right.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I think it's great. I agree with you, Kevin. I think it's a great thing, and I hope they can find a way to go forward with it.
Okay.
Wonderful. It is funny, though. It just always, it makes me chuckle, the things that I understand why we have to approve it, but meanwhile, these big things going.
Yes, yes, I know. We just couldn't authorize a permit to happen in town without the town board saying it's okay.
Exactly.
So just to be clear, this is a yes, if they go forward, they don't go forward, it's going to be documented as a yes, so you're not coming back to the board showing they're moving forward?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, I'm good with that. Why is it so loud?
I don't know. I feel like it's very loud as well.
So a quick vote?
Oh, yeah, maybe a roll call vote might be better, just to have it memorialize it.
Sure.
Okay. Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, thank you. We have a few informational items, and we'll start with ARPA project update, Carrie.
Okay. Well, this is really not just a me update, but I, so all of the folks who are involved in the execution of the projects thought it'd be good to share the sort of where we are with all of them, so everybody's on the same page. The good news is the projects that are advancing under the ARPA funding are all going to be completed in the timeline required, and that's before the end of 2026. So these were all the projects that could be executed with the required contracts and/or POs in time and in compliance with ARPA's funding regulations or requirements. And you'll see here what's complete and what's in progress. And some of the projects that are in progress means that like the materials may have already been purchased, but not everything's been installed, or that they continue to be ongoing. And so as you, if there's any questions about any of these, I'm happy to provide more information.
And Carrie, remind me, we had to commit by the end of last year, but it's got to be paid by the end of next year, is that?
Correct, yeah. So the funding had to be committed, not just committed, but also contracts had to be executed or POs had to be processed in association with whatever the planned spending was going to be. And so, and then you'll also recall that at the end of last year, adopted a resolution, just to clarify, that the funding for the authorized projects could be moved around between each other as needed to ensure that no funding was lost. Because any funding that doesn't get spent in accordance with the regulations would have to be returned to the federal government at the conclusion of the 2026.
And was the rollover, the Channing Philbrook project?
Yes.
Which is completed before the others? So I just want to make sure, the ones that are noted as in progress, are they, where are they coming in in terms of spending? On track, under?
A couple of them are slightly under, and a couple of are probably remain to be seen in terms of like the labor costs associated with it. So the Channing Philbrook Park project from a capture standpoint can be the receiver because it was such a large funding project. So if anything couldn't be spent on the other ones, we, for example, I believe the passenger van has come in under, the $100,000 was set aside for it, and I think it came in somewhere in the 90s. So those funds could be redirected to another project that was on the authorized list by the town board.
Okay, so I guess what I'm ultimately getting at, though, is all of the ARPA funds will be expended.
Yes.
We're not at risk for forfeiting anything.
No.
Not even close.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only have a small portion allocated to Channing Philbrook at this point, of which we spent the $750,000. So there's plenty of room in that project that we could take in all access.
You'll absorb the ARPA and credit back to the general fund or some other fund?
Yep.
Okay.
Didn't we have filtered water stations?
You do, and I apologize that they're not on this list. I don't, I couldn't get the status as to whether or not they could be ordered in time or the PO could be executed. It's very likely that they were, and I just couldn't get confirmation of that.
Okay.
So I'll clarify that and add it to the list.
Anything else like that that's not here?
So there was a few projects that you authorized, but we could not execute the contract in time.
Okay.
Examples of that were, for example, the active transportation plan. And so the project is moving forward but couldn't be funded through ARPA.
That was funded through general fund, and that came through the engineering department budget, so we just did another.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, we, anything that couldn't be accomplished under the requirements, and I am happy to put that list together and share that with you.
Yeah, just curious of how, are there things?
That couldn't be funded directly through ARPA. Not to say they couldn't be offset or funded through general fund.
Right, right.
I just, we can't, the certain projects are, needed to be executed in a timely fashion in order for the ARPA funding to be applied.
Understood, yeah. I'm just curious that that filtered water one seemed like...
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I took it off because I had a question mark next to it. And I was like, I don't know where this, I don't know what the status of that is. So as soon as I have that updated, I will add it back to the list.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next item is a web-based permitting software proposal update. Carrie, you're up again.
That's really all three of us. So as the town board's aware, the RFP was released by the town last month or the month before. They were due just a couple of weeks ago. We have received 17, the count might be actually 18 proposals. It is quite a lot to go through. And so Alan has called upon a few of us, other departments that utilize the software to help sift through the proposals received. The expectation is that the listing will be whittled down and will be moving toward recommendation in the next month or so. So more of an update to come at next month's work session. Just wanted you to be aware that RFPs have been received. They are under review, and there are a lot of them.
Are they all different, different software packages?
There are different software solutions, different software programs, different, lots of things. There's so much, a lot of options.
Limit it down to the top three or four, and then do interviews with those, and then come back with a recommendation to the board of...
What fits their needs.
Yes.
What fits, fits best.
Yes. So just another update. Oh, so speaking of RFPs and proposal responses, so this one, and we did have a selection review group comprised of many folks from very, a lot of departments. And we've established a top three ranking of the proposals received. I did provide that listing to you. In the interest of not, I'm reluctant to talk about it out loud because we haven't contacted anyone about the results of that review at this point. But if the board is amenable, the plan would be for interviews to be conducted with the top three. The top three of the seven received were all within, you know, if you do an average ranking, they're all within .5 of each other in terms of like...
And it was, it was the opposite of typical, right? It was low number.
Low number is a high score. So you ask, so this is how the rating went. Please review the proposals, rank your top three in order. So one, two, or three.
So if all ones would be the lowest score?
So one means that they were number one.
Like, I want this.
Yes, correct. And number two is, you know, so if you have, the score closest to one is the best score. And so that tends to work out by way of how often did a firm get listed in the top three? That means that there are better chance of having a higher, a lower score, meaning a higher ranking. And so the ranking is one, two, and three.
So at that point, I guess what I'm getting at, at that point, it was truly just a stack ranking. It wasn't against a matrix or a list of qualifications. It was just like, when you run through all these, who do you think is the best?
Yes.
And then we'd go through interviews, and then as we did in the past ones, would have a matrix to go through, would do the matrix in the interviews, but...
Understand.
We were trying to get to like a smaller group.
Just pare down from that larger field to who everybody thought was the top.
And I will say there was a lot of consistency across the board in terms of the frequency of folks in the top three. The order might have changed for people, but generally speaking, there seemed to be a lot of overlap.
Like, one was kind of one.
Yeah.
And how many?
12 people.
12 people.
We've been getting a lot of responses to our RFPs, which is
Always a good thing.
Great news, and, you know, gives us a lot of choice. So it's
Right.
More work on our end, but at the end of the day, you've got a lot of choices and a lot of consultants who want to work with us, so it's...
So the plan would be for to conduct interviews, do a scoring matrix. I'm coming back to you in November with the results of that.
Okay.
And happy to, I know I shared the RFP or the proposals that were received when we first received them. Happy to resend the top three only.
Thank you.
This way, I'll do that as a, this way, if you want to take a peek, you can.
Thank you. I would appreciate it.
I'll send them all 18, why don't you?
Send all the proposals, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, town project update, Mark.
I can start with some. So the Ready Project, that's the pump station on Empire Boulevard. The funded portion is completed, so the pump station is in. It's new. We've got a nice thing on LinkedIn. Thank you, PC TV did a nice little excerpt on that and had a little, you know, presentation showing that. So if you can click on there, they've got a little video showing portions.
On LinkedIn?
Yeah, in portions, and maybe on our website as well. That's where I had seen it. The pumps, or excuse me, the generator is supposed to be arriving this week. That was something that was not funded through the Ready Project, but it was just something the board went ahead with with that. So now that that is complete, we are submitting back to the DEC, who was the original funder for that, so we can get our grant money back. The Philbrook Bridge, we kind of talked about last month, but that's complete. So it's a nice project to have done.
It's beautiful. The pictures that you can take from there, if you haven't walked it, it's gorgeous. Sorry.
I'm sure, I haven't walked in a few weeks, but with the leaves changing and falling now, I'm sure it's even nicer than what it was. The Climate Action Plan, wanted to give an update on that. So that one is another one we got RFPs on. We've got...
16? We got some very large number.
16 RFPs for the Climate Action Plan, again, which is great that we've got.
It's amazing.
I mean, people...
Like, regional?
I mean, we got them all the way from across the country, so...
I'm excited with California, Seattle, and...
Yep. We've got California, Seattle companies and stuff that do it across the country, so it gives us a great view of what everybody's doing and what their proposals are. We've got many local, you know, good companies, you know, in it as well, so we're going through those right now. So again, this was just an update to the board that we've got a lot in, reviewing those, and then, you know, paring those down, again, looking to schedule interviews, and then, you know, hopefully, you know, November meeting, come back with some, you know, recommendations for the board to consider, you know, on that. Sidewalks are moving ahead. If anybody's been down Five Mile, we're a little slow with concrete right now. I think that seems to be everybody's, I don't know who's taking it all up, but the contractors running a little slow with installing concrete.
Because they can't get any.
Because they can't get it. It's not that they can't do the job, but...
They're not being slow with it, they just can't obtain any.
But that's been, you've heard me talk about sidewalk contractors in past years. So that part's going a little slower, but they're moving along on Five Mile. Then they're going to jump over to Jackson and then, you know, go as far as we can this year with Jackson until we can't with the weather. So once we get into freezing temperatures, they can blanket it, you know, for so much, but we'll go as far as we can, you know, this fall with Jackson. We'll stop, and then we'll pick up Jackson and Plank spring/summer of next year. So just a status on that. DPW is progressing along well. I think we're still on track for first quarter next year for having that wrapped up. And I haven't been in it in a little while, but I think the interior rooms are completed. Jeff, I think you took a tour just recently.
I think they poured the floor and things are moving along, but yeah.
Yep. So that's, you know, moving along well. And then I'll turn it over to Carrie for
The rest of them.
Clark House.
All right. So Clark House project is moving rapidly. So if you drive by on a daily basis, it's going to look different every time you go by. The original house has been painted, windows are in, the porches are up, the bench has been restored on the side. They're still doing, they're waiting on the actual door to be ready for installation before they do the area right around the door. And then exterior lights have to go in. So there's still some things, but it really has come a long way, and it's looking stunning from, even from a distance, and looks even better up close. You'll see that siding is up on the cart barn. If it wasn't completed today, it's likely to be completed before the end of the week. Siding on the addition is slated to happen next. They've started, curbing is in. They're doing the grading for all of the site work around. Concrete's coming in next week. Storefront windows, those, that's a fancy way of saying the big windows on the addition are expected to start next week as well. So by the end of October, it is going to be a much different looking project. And the idea is to try to get everything on the exterior as complete as it can so that when snow flies, they're inside, they're not going to worry about fighting the elements or elements getting inside. So it's going, it's going really, really well. The LaSalle's Landing Comfort Station is out to bid as of today. So bids will be open, and again, that's under WIC's law. They have to have the four separate contracts. The contracts are separated by, in accordance with town law, or excuse me, state law. And so bid opening will be here in Town Hall at 11:00 AM on Friday, November 7. There is going to be a pre-bid meeting to clarify questions of anybody. And MRB has done a really nice job with the project and the design and getting everything ready to go for bidding.
Is that all we had on our list? That's a lot, but...
We hope to have a lot of information and a lot of stuff back to you in November, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully we have a lot of recommendations, bids in, and things ready to take action in November, so.
Noticed big equipment, piece of equipment by the Clark barn today.
You know what? We noticed it as well. I have to, I have to check with Bob Moore. I don't know if that's the contractor just asking to store equipment there, getting ready for the work. I believe that they...
It looks like a big crane, I think is what
Yes.
Warren is referring to.
Okay, maybe they staged some material for that.
It looked like a crane. It has nothing to do with the Clark House project, but I, Bob Moore can probably provide an update.
I get your job time, too. I can reach out to him, too. I was talking with someone who does archaeological studies and digs them, they were very interested in just being able to go over there, volunteer, and do it, so I was going to get more information and send it out to the board to see if that's something, just to go through that land that's there. If they're all ready to work in the next week, obviously, that's not going to happen, but I will send some more information out to everyone.
Okay.
As they're working on the active construction site, we'll just have to be very careful of who's in and where and what, and that puts us into.
Right, right, it would have to be very controlled, and again, I have, that was what I shared with you.
Okay, I was going to ask what archaeological volunteer means.
That there is a community group that, again, it was a 10-second, oh, I don't know, send me some information.
Oh, okay.
I know, we've had a lot of requests for other stuff, and people want to get in and look and whatever, and we're like, it's an active construction site, and.
Exactly.
Our insurance company will allow it, so that's just why we need to ask them.
Can you include Pete on that as well, so that he can look at the insurance, to see if any of that's going to.
The way I understand it, I mean, it's really under Krista's control, because it's
an active site.
For the Clark House, the Clark Barn would be under the other contractor.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Just make sure it doesn't interfere the other contractor's insurance and their liability with a standing building and everything else, just make sure.
Right, because I'm thinking, right, because for the, you'll have that by your.
I believe you're correct, so.
So I think that was, that was the reason why we spent the additional funds on the fencing, and that was purely from a town liability perspective, right, so.
Yep.
I got you.
Take a look at whatever you sent me, you know, but I just, I don't want to make any promises.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't have any other updates unless the board's looking for something.
Yeah, and for the, followed on the La Salle's project, so we're going to hope to have bid results to share at the November meeting as well, and that should be enough time to vet the contractors, to make sure that comfortable, and hopefully, we'll, knock on wood, be.
Like a ward before the end of the year, huh?
Yeah.
Keep that moving.
Yeah, no, that's great, and with the DPW facility on track, right, things are going great, do we know yet where the debris drop-off is going to be in relationship to the new one, are we still?
I think phase two is like.
Think we still got to take down old buildings, they got to move over.
Gotcha.
Get in, we got to go back and demo old buildings, so I think we're a little premature still on just kind of figuring all that.
Fuel Island, although, there's a few things.
Building's up and go, great, we're done, but then they've got to demo the old building, they got to do abatement on that, and then put up salt barns and.